Member Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Grineal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins? Mayor Miller?
I'm here, thank you. Consideration possible action to approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Interior Solutions of Arizona LLC to provide furniture, lockers, and storage for the Chino Valley Police Department in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents. Joe, who's not here.
They probably scared him away.
Where'd he go?
He left.
Joe, you're up.
They need desks and chairs.
Ninety-eight pages of furniture.
Police furniture.
Say that again?
Police furniture, Joe.
Good, that was a great statement.
I'm sorry, that was under my items, but I'm trying to think, actually, the police department has been a lot more involved with actually putting it together.
And it is a cooperative agreement on the state contract?
Yes.
Allowing them to purchase it.
They'll say it all again.
Mayor and council, it is, they're asking to do a cooperative purchase agreement on state contract for furniture with Interior Solutions to allow them to provide furniture for the police department. We have a quote, and it is only good, I believe, through the end of the month, and so we need to get the contract in place so that they can make the purchase and secure the pricing.
We're not talking a whole lot. I guess it's my turn. Go ahead. Now, Joe, just confirm, is this coming out of our account, or is this loan money?
Yeah, this is actually, we budgeted to purchase all the furniture and equipment for the police department, so it's our funds.
Alright, it's all been budgeted. Anybody have any questions on this?
Ju- just one.
Okay.
Project Services, last line item on the Interior Solutions. Is that, is that basically assembly, movement, transport, all that, or is there more involved in this labor?
Project, project management?
Project Services, yes.
Project Services.
Line thirty-one?
Yes, that is correct. It's for all the labor, the installation, getting all the furniture placed and set up.
Okay.
In the police department, yes, sir.
Does that seem high, forty-six thousand dollars to put furniture together?
So, line thirty-one is twenty-one, seven, ninety-eight, is that what you're looking at?
I'm looking at line twenty-one.
Oh, line twenty-one, okay.
Line?
I'm not looking at the same.
Line twenty-one?
I said, line twenty-one.
Twenty-one on the right-hand side of the page is line numbers?
Page three of five, top one.
Actually, on page two of four.
Two of four.
Yeah, on two of four.
Two of four.
I'm just curious, that's why I'm saying for that amount, it just seems like it's more than basic assembly.
Right, and maybe, Randy, could you help us with this, on everything that they're gonna be doing?
Thirty-one.
Yeah, I see it.
Line thirty-one's got more information.
I think, oh no, that's at the bottom.
Go to line thirty-one.
Somebody needs to come up to microphone there.
Thirty-one, go to line thirty-one.
Thirty-one, what page are you on?
The last one.
Did I hear twenty-one also?
Three-one?
Thirty-one. Labor to receive, deliver, and install during regular business hours, twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight bucks.
I don't have a thirty-one.
Yeah, so Mayor, so Mayor and council, we have two quotes here.
Yeah.
We have the first quote, which is for just all the furnitures, the desks, the chairs, the tables, and all the office equipment. And that is, I think, from your page through page five. And then we have a second quote, which includes all, from the same company, and that includes all the lockers, the gun cabinets, the shelving units, the file cabinets, and all
So that's all included?
That type of mechanical, or that type of furniture and equipment with it. So, each of those have a separate installation price for all the gun cabinets and all the lockers and all the rolling file cabinets and all that. It's forty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. You've answered my question, thank you.
Okay.
Any other? Oh, so, Chloe?
Joe, what did we budget for the furniture?
Okay, so in total, for furniture and fixtures, the original projection for the budget was five hundred thousand. But this year's budget, we actually increased it, and, well, I can't tell you the exact amount that we put in the budget here. Actually, let me look right here, I can tell you exactly where it is. But I did look at that today, Annie, and with all these change orders, including the change order that we're presenting next week to council, I believe we're gonna be about two hundred thousand dollars under what we projected for the entire project. So, we're still good there. But, to answer your question directly, yeah, I mean, I think we're gonna be right on, and Frank's, the change order we're presenting to council will have a little bit of a buffer just to catch anything else that we have forgotten. We're trying to do just all at one time. That we don't know. So, we had budgeted for police equipment, and actually, we didn't budget for it this year because we knew we weren't gonna be buying it and getting it delivered until after July. So, in the, in next year's budget, we've budgeted seven hundred thousand for equipment and five hundred thousand for furniture. So, we've added just, we have a real nice cushion there, just for, just in case something comes up that we're not knowing about. The only other items that were, that were, the next item that we bring to you is all the door locks and the communication equipment, the video cameras, and TVs, and all that kind of stuff, so that'll be the next item after the change order we do next week. And probably, we hope, will be nearly one of the last items that we bring to you for this project. And we have quotes for that, and I have them, I do have the numbers, the preliminary numbers, and putting all that together, it looks like we're gonna be just about, the total project's gonna be just a little over nine million dollars. And that's from day one, the architectural fees, all the construction, all the equipment, all the audio visual, all the cap, so it'll be right about there. The town will pay just a little over two million dollars, and we borrowed seven million dollars to do the project.
Alright, most everybody was there today.
You weren't.
But the walk, the topping off, the building looks awesome. It's really exciting now you can start to see it good, so. Any further discussions on the item before us?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in page two of four of the quote, line twelve, forty powered freestyle lockers, I've never heard of a powered motorized locker.
No, sir, the, what it is, is the lockers actually have power inside of them, so they can charge their radios.
So they're not motorized?
No, 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 it's just they have power strips in the lockers to charge, charge things like phones and radios and things.
Yeah, got it.
It's a new trend, because they have so many things that have to be recharged. Instead of having them all over the building, they can keep them in their locker and charge them right there.
So they get their own separate radio and they?
They each have a charger for the radio, I guess.
Okay, that's a great idea.
And, you know, they'll be locked in their locker, and because things, amazingly, in a police department, things disappear, and then we have to try to find them. So, especially food, but they'll each have their own locker where they can secure their equipment.
Here's the scope of work.
Is it here too, if you wanted to look that up more?
Alright, any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody can do it.
To make a motion, we approve the cooperative purchase agreement with Interior Solutions of Arizona LLC in the amount not to exceed five hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we need a motion to adjourn, Chloe.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Okay, motion moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned from this meeting, and now we're gonna go right on into the study session, and we're gonna have to call this meeting to order and have a roll call again.
Councilmember Kelly?
Present.
Councilmember Turner is absent. Councilmember McCafferty?
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong?
Here.
Councilmember Grineal?
Here.
Vice Mayor Perkins?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Are you done? I wouldn't pay attention, I'm sorry. Oh, see, first item. Presentation to discussion regarding preliminary budget for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three from Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There, I didn't say JoJo.
Thank you, sir.
First name, David.
Yes, thank you.
Well, there is a lot of damn papers to that.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council, it's a pleasure working with you here tonight, going over our budget. This has been a combination of a process that we started really back in February. We've been meeting with staff, with the town manager's office. Terry has been a major plus this year in helping us get this budget compiled and put together. We've had numerous meetings, done a lot of research, and it's probably been one of the more complicated budgets that I've done since I've been with Chino Valley. It's actually, we're gonna spend, we're gonna spend a lot of money this year trying to get a lot of things done. And that sounds maybe not goo-, you know, that sounds a little aggressive, but the reason is because we didn't spend as much this year as we thought, and so we're just rolling a lot of projects over, but we have a lot of new projects. And between Cindy and I tonight, I hope we'll give you a good explanation and a good view of exactly what we're trying to do here. The number one thing we started with, and after our retreat, was your priorities and what you guys wanted us to accomplish. So, we believe this budget is gonna accomplish a majority of these throughout. We have the year ones colored in green and the year two to three colored in blue, and as we go through the, as we go through this slide, you'll see how we color-coded each of the specific items that we, that will fit either in year one or year two or in three. So, and they include the general plan, pavement management program, begin design on the sewer treatment plan expansion. Number two, get projects done, and you're gonna see, we're getting a lot of projects done through here. Increase the use of technology, expand our IT system, approve communications with residents, accelerate our road maintenance programs, and increase maintenance activities overall through all the departments, facilities, et cetera. Uh, obtain water providers, and out, five years out, is an idea of building a new town hall complex. And you'll see that graphically here in a few minutes. So, as I talked at the last meeting, you know, overall, our revenues are very strong. We're seeing really good trends. We budgeted for, like, our sales tax to have a three percent increase year-to-date, and we're up about ten. Second year in a row that that's happened. So, we conservatively estimate our revenues, and we overestimate our expenses, which gives us usually every year, and for at least the last ten, gives us a little more money at the end of the year than we started with, which is a good practice, and that's allowed the town of Chino to build up healthy reserves in all of its funds. Retail sales, I continue to see a healthy increase in those. A lot of those are driven by increased internet sales, and I think that trend's gonna continue. I believe gas prices being high, they might slow down, but more and more people are buying stuff online and having it shipped. It's convenient, and we all do it, we all, you know, Amazon, et cetera. We're continuing, continuing to see strong construction activity, and just the stuff that's on the burner right now with multifamily homes, the subdivisions that are starting, I can, I continue, you know, I'm seeing that that's gonna continue at a, at a healthy pace from this point forward. Uh, and that's gonna add new water and sewer accounts, so that's really gonna help the enterprise funds. And we have several major projects planned next year. We've got, you know, at least one, if not two, major apartment complex, a couple subdivisions, and, and several new retail things that are starting to get closer and closer to getting in the ground and being reality. So, overall, I'm thinking, you know, the town's in really good, stable condition. We have healthy reserves. We see strong revenues coming in, and so a lot of things are working to Chino Valley's favor. So, one of the big things is, this is our state shared revenues. These estimates are provided by the League of Cities and Towns, and working with, you know, all their, the legislature and stuff, and where they get this, and the Department of Revenue. And you can see they've, this is this budget year, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, and the net change. And so, that is a significant amount, particularly in state shared income tax. And so, that amount is such a large bump that Cindy and I believe that we should reserve at least a half million dollars as one-time revenue instead of ongoing revenue. So, we don't wanna count on this revenue every year, year after year. We got it coming, we'll go ahead and spend it, but this state shared income tax is usually two years behind of what the income tax collections are from the state, and then they distribute them. So, this is like the beginning of COVID, and we know a lot of people stayed home during COVID. A lot of people probably didn't work as much during COVID. People didn't pay as much income tax. So, I'm betting, and we're betting, that next year, this number won't be two-point-five, it's gonna be less, and probably maybe even back down to the one-point-six.
That's where you're gonna see the lag from that.
Right, so we're gonna see a couple of years of lag here, so we got a nice little bump this year, which is, yeah, we're, we're happy about that, but let's don't ca-, let's don't plan on it being there in the next few years. Uh, vehicle license tax, I think, you know, that's just ongoing, your registration fees, that's pretty stable. And your highway user revenue also, I think, is, is pretty stable. So, I, this is what I explained in, in the council meeting last week. We started the budget year with nine-point-six million dollars, or that's what we were planning last year at this time when I presented to you. We only ended the year with nine million, so we spent an extra six hundred thousand dollars. However, our revenues are up a million, our expenses are down six hundred thousand, so these sort of wash. And the bottom line, we're starting this year with an extra million dollars more than we planned on last year. And that's because of the way we budget conservatively, and this is gonna lead us to, this year, we're gonna budget a little more aggressively to try to get into those reserves and actually spend some of those down to get some projects done. And we'll show you where that's coming from now, which I totally concur with, because our reserves are almost double of what they need to be, if not a little more than double. So, this graph is the current year.
This is number five, by the way.
You're only allowed four.
I, because I don't get up at every council meeting, I figure I get four per meeting, does that work?
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay, that's okay, so, so let me explain this, and then we'll get through the other graphs really quick. The red is our required reserves. We can't spend that money. We need to save that for a rainy day. The yellow is our excess reserve, money we have extra, that's more than our policy's required. Green is our ongoing revenues, or our one-time revenues. So, these are things like that five hundred thousand, we're gonna make that one-time, half of our building permits. You know, so we pull back, we know, you know, that a lot of revenues we're only gonna get one time. And our orange are our ongoing revenues, and these are pretty stable, and you can see how we project them. They're pretty even, just going up, you know, three percent a year, not a big thing. So, the blue is our ongoing expenses, and what you never wanna see is when your ongoing expenses exceed your ongoing revenues. Because that's telling me you're, you're operating in the red, on, on your operating stuff. So, salaries and wages and supplies and utilities and stuff in this blue column can't be more than what we're getting every year. And then the gray is our one-time revenues. So, these are the one-time projects, the capital projects, the vehicle purchases, the things like that that we want to do. Last year, this graph right here, this is where we're gonna end the year, and you can see, we didn't even, even with our special projects, we barely got above our one-time revenues, barely. Last year, we budgeted just like this, that we were gonna dip into our reserves, into this yellow, and spend, you know, all that money, but the reality is, when, when we're, when it comes down with our strong revenues, we didn't even get in there. So, this year, we're gonna budget aggressively also, again. And I can bet you, and I hu-, and I really think we do need to get into that reserves, because our reserves are so high, let's try to get a lot of work done. But, the reality is, next year, this time, we might be looking at the exact same graph. There's a good potential of that, so, you know, but we'll see. But you'll, the, with some of the roadwork and stuff we're gonna use this money for, we'll probably, we'll spend quite a bit of it. And that's a healthy thing. It gets our reserves down to a nice, healthy level going forward. So, it's sort of a one, if we accomplish everything we want to accomplish right here, the next year's budgets won't be nearly as aggressive. Won't have as much money to do stuff, holding everything equal. So, this is what the HERF fund looks like. Again, our, our ongoing expenses are way under ongoing revenues. We are trying to dip into the reserves a little bit. This is also a small fund, it's only, you know, three million dollars. It doesn't have as much money on it. So, you know, compared to the general fund, but, uh, so it looks a little bit, but, so, and this is really just transferring money over to do road, to roadwork. But, these outlying years, they're very healthy that way, you know, and we haven't really identified any projects, and we'll probably continue to transfer to the roads capital improvement each year to do it, but the, our ongoing expense, revenues are exceeding our ongoing expenses, which is a very healthy thing for this fund. So, this is our general fund capital improvements, and this is one percent of our sales tax that comes over. And the green is one-time revenues, and it, the graph does this, but this is really the police department funding right here, the borrowed funds that we're using. And this is the police department getting it, the work that it's, we've done so far this year. This is finishing the police department, and several other projects, and we have pushed this number high to give us plenty of buffer, just in case we need a little more money for the police department. And we're recommending transferring even five hundred thousand over from the general fund.
No.
Just to make sure we have enough. And, we're doing it to be conservative, because we're, but we're thinking, you know, we're over halfway done building it. We've got pretty much quotes on everything that we're gonna need, so we don't anticipate any emergencies, but we can't say for sure that something might come up. So, and then after that, the fund gets back to a nice little comfortable balance. Of course, most of these projects, the, the ongoing stuff is your, just your debt service payments, because we use this money to pay our debt, general fund debt service. So, this is, this fund, if we needed to not do any projects really quick, we could just turn it off, you know, if revenues did die. So, this is, you know, just more for capital-type things. And then we put out a project called New Town Hall about five years out, just to show you. It's, it'd have to be done with borrowed money, so that'll be one-time green money. And then, uh, this is the total cost of the project, and it's just out there as a placeholder at this time, and, you know, something for council that, this, we're putting it out on the radar, and we'll see where it goes from here. Uh, the enterprise, the Water Enterprise Fund, again, it's, it's healthy, it's operating at a good clip cash-wise. Uh, the revenues are exceeding the expenses. We are proposing a rate study, it's been five years, so we do need to do a rate study for water and sewer. And so, we have that in both the water and sewer budget to look at rates. And we have a, just, some small capital items that we're planning on doing this year there. The Sewer Enterprise Fund, it's, on the operating side, it's doing fine. However, we are spending a lot of money on capital and fixing a lot of things. This is the fund that I'm a little bit worried about, and doing the rate study will help us quantify what kind of revenues we need. But I am saying that, you know, we're, everything out there is so expensive that we don't really have our handle, you know, exactly what we're gonna need to do out there to keep it up and, to keep it operating efficiently. So, we're making some progress, and we have a few projects on the drawing board that we'll get into in just a minute. So, I wanted to go through all the transfers that we do. We do move money from one bucket to another, and that's essentially what we're doing. So, just to let you, and it'll identify some of the projects that we're doing. We're moving money from the general fund to the asset replacement fund. We've been doing that for, this year, I think, was the first year. But that's really the purchase vehicles, building, we got one vehicle and building, at least one police car. We're gonna do one in the general fund, one in here, and we've just set aside money for up to four public works vehicles. We haven't quite identified exactly what those are gonna be at this time, and we may or may not spend all that money this year. We put it, we transferred an extra five hundred from the general fund to the, to the general fund capital improvement fund for the police department, if needed. If not, we can transfer, if we don't spend it, we can transfer it back or use it for something else. We're transferring three-point-one million dollars from the general fund to the Road CIP, and that's the biggest chunk. And that's so that we can do a little over two and a half million dollars worth of roads projects. Council, you've already authorized five hundred thousand of that transfer, and, so that we can do the roadwork we're doing now. So, we'll have about two, two-point-five, two-point-six available for roads. And, um, and then also, we're transferring a million dollars into the COVID state and local recovery fund, and that's what it's technically called. And that's the American Recovery Fund, or that's the federal dollars that we're getting to, to, two million dollar-plus payments. And, we're putting another million dollars in there just to make sure we have enough to do the, both the projects that we have pinpointed for that. So, it's more of just a buffer, and again, this is money that, if we don't need it, we won't spend it. HERF is transferring two hundred thousand to its Road CIP for road projects. These are our debt service payments from the, the general fund CIP to the debt service fund. And per the resolution that set up that fund, we've been transferring two hundred fifty to support PD back to the general fund, and a hundred and fifty for the Aquatic Center. We've been making this four hundred thousand dollar transfer for, for years on it. The Water Enterprise Fund, we're, we're sending about a hundred thousand over for a few capital projects, and the sewer, the same thing, two hundred and fifty for a couple of projects. So, we're recommending that we actually borrow some money this year, borrow it from WIFA. The first loan will be for the equalization basins and blowers, and that's, Frank can talk about that in detail, but that, um, that project is engineered and just about ready to go out to bid, I believe.
It's under design.
It's under design right now, so, we'll have that. And then we also under-design is the one east sewer line extension. Now, that's gonna be a five million dollar project, probably. And I'm only putting in, right now, two million dollars, but we're actually not doing the loan until we get the pro-, the project bid and we're closer to it. But we have a strong feeling, the way that we're gonna present that to WIFA, that we're gonna get a significant amount of forgivable principal. And we've already had some conversations with them. They're getting a lot of federal money into their buckets also. And so, and because of Chino Valley being an underprivileged community, we'll probably qualify for quite a.
And, and what does that money cost us?
The forgivable, the.
The, not the forgivable, forgivable, but what's your interest rate?
I don't know.
Is it way down there?
It's low, but it's going up, just like all the other interests.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah, but it's gonna be.
So it's pretty cheap.
It's gonna be three, three and a half, four, you know.
Okay, yeah, okay.
So, but this project still needs a lot more work before we get to the, before we're ready to borrow money. This one will come to you first. We'll be ready to go on that one as soon as, as soon as we get it out to bid. So, employees, did you wanna talk employees?
Sure.
Okay.
Which one, the microphone?
Oh, it's next, it's next.
Just to let everyone know, the microphones, all the microphones are working. He just had to turn the speakers down because of where the mics are with the speakers.
No problem. Hey, um, do you wanna do questions now on yours, or you wanna wait and do a man to you? No, it don't matter to me, huh? Fresh in your head, go.
So, the, uh, the, uh, can you go back one slide? Oh, the, the COVID relief fund, a million dollars, is that, do you have to use it or lose it?
Um, I believe we, we have to have it obligated by twenty-six and spent, like, two years later. I could be off on that, but we just have to have the project obligated, and then we have to have it spent by a certain amount of time. And yes, if we don't have it spent by the end, we'll, we'll lose it, but we have plenty of time to get that done.
Okay, and Frank, what do you think the blowers are gonna really cost?
I think it'll, that should be an accurate budget.
One-point-five?
If not, it's conservative. I think, I think we're good there, from, from what I've seen so far in the design process.
Questions, Tom?
None.
Annie?
Just curious, I didn't see where the PSPRS was on that, within, what, what area did that fall under?
Okay, so we have not addressed that in the budget. We do have it, every year, we give, what the policy that the town adopted was that we would use excess contingency funds in the general fund to make an annual contribution to pay it down. So, we've been making three hundred thousand dollar payments for the last, I believe, four fiscal years. And we bring that to council every May or first part of June, because by then, we know where we're gonna be, and ask, ask them for authority to go ahead and make that payment. So, we did not increase it or adjust it at all.
Joe, can you go, just give us a little summary off top? Joe, can you go, just give us a little summary off the top of your head, where we were, where we are, what's us costing us and what we're saving?
Okay, so, um, we have an unfunded liability and I don't wanna quote the number off the top of my head, but it's around two and a half million.
Yeah, just estimate.
2.6 million dollars. And we've been paying down $300,000 to reduce that unfunded liability every year. And when you do that, it actually incre, decreases your contribution rate that we have to pay for our current retirees. So it actually has a benefit for us, about an 8% for every hundred thousand dollars that we do. For the first couple of years we were doing it, we were actually decreasing the unfunded liability. And then we had a few cops change and go on the drop and it jacked it up a little bit last year, or, or moved it up a little bit.
That's better.
Jode it up a little bit. He jode it up, yep. And then this year we got the actuarial evaluation back and it's actually heading back down again.
Good.
So the, the originally, I was telling council, probably in 10 years we'd have it paid off. And we're just using budgeted contingency funds at 300,000. Now this year we have a $600,000 contingency. And we've only spent maybe 75,000 of it and that's, I think, all we're probably gonna spend. So we could make a larger contribution to it. And when I bring that to council, I will definitely bring that.
I, I just think it's important to realize that we save ourselves a lot of money if we can get that paid down. We're not paying the higher payments, we're paying way lower payments, so that's, that's the important part.
Did we go below the 3 million threshold though? Because when I was looking at those reports, we were actually higher. I know, I understand the one case, the one officer converted over.
Yeah.
I understood that and that one, I took it up to 3.7 or whatever. But are we below 3 million now? Because when you guys started this on the resolution, you were at 3.2 million was your unfunded debt, liability. And then we went up to 3.7. I wanna know after four years, have we broken below three?
I believe so. I thought we were around the 2.8, but I could be off too. I'm just doing off the top of my head, so I can get you that information.
Yeah, cuz I'm just saying, if we're talking about the budget, it just seems like this is a good time to just, I'd like to see it go to zero. Some municipalities and cre, did tax like Prescott.
Right.
And they went from 88 million down to 22 million in three years.
Right.
Which is, you know, that's significant.
Yeah.
And, you know, and it's actually a tax that might disappear sooner than they ever expected. Go figure, no government does that, but.
Right.
Um, I just, like the mayor said, I'd like to see it get down to zero.
And actually, we probably should put it on the June 7th agenda and bring it to you guys for discussion.
Okay, and then we'll have good numbers.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Frank. Oh, I had a question too. On the sewer, huh? Am I yelling?
Get excited.
On the sewer, we had a lot of discussion back in the day when I was on, uh, utilities about septic at, making a new plant or a separate plant for septic receiving, cuz it was a big money item. And I haven't heard anything about that in a long time. Is that buried or is that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's.
Our plant just can't handle septic, to be honest. Especially after the recent experience we had with whatever got dumped in it. It's a big wake-up call that, it's a, it's a very efficient plant and a small footprint, very effective at getting water very clean to do recharge.
Mm-hmm.
But it's very sensitive and septic is so concentrated. To be able to do that, we'd have to basically construct a different style plant, like I think you said.
Yes, sir. That, well, that was the talk of putting in a second plant that would handle that because the thought was there was a lot of money to be gained with that, for the, to become like a regional.
That's some opinions.
Some opinions, so not yours.
Right.
Just yours.
Okay.
Uh, I believe the previous engineer had that opinion and I, I tend to differ because septic is so hard to treat that I think it's, it's gonna be expensive to treat no matter how you do it.
All right, I just thought maybe it would be. Be a good revenue for us, but maybe it's not. Cuz maybe I'm still on the opinion.
Maybe I can throw my boss under the bus and if you have any experience with that.
Um, in my experience, Mayor, Council, um, a lot of plants go away from that just because treatment costs have gotten so high. And, um, the level of treatment that is required now has gone up, you know? And so, um, the cost of chemicals and the different processes, and like you said, with the loadings that septic brings, it's very difficult for plants to process.
Okay, thank you, both of you. That's it, any more questions? Okay, take it back, Joe.
Okay, so now to employees.
All right, so, um, if you'll see from the chart here, we are gonna be recommending adding a, a number of positions. Um, seven positions total, um, six in, oh, I don't have my microphone down, sorry. Six in the general fund and one in the water and sewer fund. And I think we have a breakdown of that.
We do?
Yes. So previously we had had a, um, contract for a public information officer. And we have, um, some very important projects coming up, going on over the next few years. Um, one especially being the general plan update or rewrite. And that's gonna take a lot of messaging. And with just a lot of stuff that we have going on, um, we'd like to make that a position. We haven't decided on perhaps the number of hours that we'll put that out for, but we'd like to budget for one FTE. And also, um, that position we're thinking right now might also handle not just the public information part, but also public affairs. So what's going on in our legislatures, what's going on in intergovernmental affairs? So handling those kinda things too, which is something we're kinda lacking right now. Our staff is making up for it right now, but we would like to, um, propose making that a new FTE. In facilities, a certified pool operator. So in all the discussions, um, that I've had, um, with Frank and with Cindy Thomas and, and the rest of the staff, that pool doesn't have anyone who is qualified really to run it and maintain it properly. And that's kinda demonstrated, what we're seeing right now is that, um, a lot of the maintenance, um, had been deferred and, um, and the staff that was working on it really did their best, but that wasn't their area specialty. You know, they're recreation coordinators or, you know, those kinda things. And so you really need someone, if you made this big of an investment in a pool, that can actually take care of it. And I think that will really save us money in the long run. We won't be running into, oh, I have to have, you know, half a million dollars to fix the pool to get it up and running. So that's why we're recommending that. And then, um, the largest recommendation is in the police department. And, um, we are looking at, the request was for three police officers. I believe in the request, someone actually said we'd, we'd, we need 10, but we can get by with three. And that is to.
Came from.
Move toward getting our police officers off of 12-hour shifts. Uh, I think in the long run, um, it's better for our community, it's better for officers. That's a long shift and with the very difficult work that they do, um, I would like to see them, the chief and, um, all the staff would like to see them be able to move to 10-hour shifts, um, just for the public safety, for our officers and for our community. And if you have questions about, I'm sure Chief would be happy to answer that. Um, we also need another custodian. And, um, we're adding a building and we're already stretched thin in our custodial staff. So that's really speaking, you'll see that's in blue. That's to make sure we are keeping up maintenance on, on our facilities. That wa, as one of your goals, yes, that you saw in blue in the first slide. And then water and sewer, we're looking for a, um, another tech for that operation that'll be split between water and sewer. Again, to make sure we're putting the property ma, proper maintenance to those assets to make sure that, um, we are increasing their life and, um, keeping costs down.
Right. And the sewer, uh, certified pool operator will be working part-time as a facilities maintenance per, person, particularly when the pools close, but they'll still keep the chemicals and everything throughout the year.
Got you.
And with that, if you have any questions about positions?
Any questions on that, peoples? Ma'am?
Quite a few.
Go.
Yours worked.
Here's your.
If I yell into it for the room to hear, then everybody at home hears me yelling. Thank you. Thank you. I'll give it back shortly, I promise. Chief, what is, uh, an average beginning, like low and high-end salary for an officer?
Well, we're just in the process of doing, we did kind of a study where we looked at Prescott, Prescott Valley and the county to see what their high, their low, their median was. So I believe right now, if they're certified out of the academy, we're currently about 55,000.
Okay.
They start 10% lower in the academy and upon graduation certification, they get that 10% bump.
Awesome, thank you. So I have been advocating for a public information officer and I believe it's something we very strongly need. I am concerned with a dollar amount of a full-time employee being 116,000 dollars.
So, um, yeah, just to clarify, that includes their salary plus all their benefits and burden. So the salary is probably about 65% of that number.
Which is 75,000 a year.
About 75,000 a year.
Okay, so, um, our prior, and bear with me. This was a contract position for like less than half of that. And I understand it was not a full-time position, but I would like to know why this needs to be a full-time position. Um, I understand that we have work going forward and I understand with the general plan, but I do not, and I cannot comprehend that dollar amount. Um, I, please break it down for me, please.
Um, Vice Mayor, um, we think that there is enough work to, um, have a full-time position. But again, that's something that, and we're recommending to you, we can look at doing, um, a part-term person and see if that works for us going in the future. But really with all of the, like I said, the projects and programs that we have moving forward, having someone who can get our message out there, make sure the public has provided all their information that they need, make sure that we're, um, we're looking at it, not just doing just the PIO part, but also doing, like I said, the, um, public affairs, making sure that we're monitoring our intergovernmental, um, contracts, that we're watching what the legislature's done, someone that can provide us with good information on that. And so that was our idea behind that recommendation.
I'd like to open for discussion, guys, what you think.
Open for discussion on.
I'd like to piggyback a question on what she's talking, can, are you, if she's not done though. Is that position, would you consider that mission critical? Would, uh, would, would the town be hampered, deter, or would, would we lose effectiveness, operational control without that position? Because as a, their primary role is gonna be a PIO. I understand the other additional duties, but as a FTE, as you call it, as a full-time employee, right? Is there really that much work when we were doing? Cuz I, I would think the PIO stuff would make up more than half of what the job would be and that was done part-time. So you're gonna have another halftime, just going out there and telling people what we're doing?
Mayor, Council, yeah, that was the idea behind that. I do think that there is a lot of work that could still be done. Like I said, we're, we're piecing it together, but there's so much more that can be done and that should be done, um, to make sure it, to make sure that our message is out there, people understand that we're doing, that we're improving communication, which was one of your goals, so that also was why we were recommended this too, that, to in a, to increase communication with our citizens. I think that's kinda lacking for us, cuz there's a lot of misinformation that gets out there. Someone to monitor what's going on on the websites, to make sure our content on the website is good. So PIO isn't just working with the newspaper or things like that. It's making sure we have good social media, um, interaction and people who can go to, um, meetings um, with the community and know what's going on. So that was our, our idea behind that.
Could that position be used to ensure town responsiveness to the community? In other words, everything would go through that person to ensure that all inquiries and responses were received and responded to and appropriately within a timely manner?
Mayor, Council, yes, that's absolutely right. And like, we are kinda piecing that together. Someone will get a request and they'll respond, um, but that's exactly what should be happening. It should all be funneling through one person. That way we have a consistent message to our residents and they know who to go to as well. The newspaper would know who to go to, those kinda things. And, um, like I said, have a consistent message and not just, um, that, but it, it provides constant communication as well. Someone who, that is their job to make sure that our residents are, are hearing what's going on in the town. And when there's misinformation out there, that they're providing better information to our town. But certainly if that's not something the council's looking for, we could look at doing it part-time as well.
Last question related to it. Is it possible, I don't know in the municipalities, but it could be considered like an accepted service? In other words, you, to get rid of an employee who hasn't done anything with misconduct, it's hard. Can this position be one that if you hired and it finds out we're just spending money and there's not enough for them to do? That you, you can release the position? It would be accepted service is what they call it in the federal government.
Um, Mayor, Council, I mean, I would have to check with HR, that's probably not something I would recommend.
Cuz nobody's gonna want the job.
Right, it, it's, it's very difficult to find, even finding someone part-time is probably gonna be difficult anyways. Um, if, if council decides for us to go part-time, it's probably gonna be difficult to hire someone. But, you know, we, we get out there and, um, do our best. But getting quality employees, it, it's difficult. The, the, the pool to choose from is small. And, um, so that all played into the factor of why we, um, recommended that.
I just get worried, let's say everybody agrees, do it, but then we find out, hey, we really don't need the position. It's not cost-effective, you know?
We could, we could.
Now we're stuck with the, the salary and employee.
Could we not always add more task?
Okay, yes, Mayor, Council, that's something, we, our staff is very small. There's a lot to do, a lot of things that we don't get to. And we see this as being a professional person, so that's, um, why it's graded a little higher, um, that will have those kind of skills that can help us in the front out of office administrative tasks, those sorts of things.
And also my comment on this would be, this person would be better at controlling the information that goes out. By that, I mean, in the past, some of our contractors got their feelings hurt when somebody else put something out without going through them or they didn't go through there and it, it would be more controlled environment, you know, it was for our flow of information. Yes, sir.
Annie, can I stick a question in here? Cuz I'm kinda.
I think we should have a round table.
I'm kinda on the same line now, sir. Where'd this number come from? Did we do a salary analysis? Put this number out of the sky, where'd it come from?
Mayor, Council, yeah, um, Laura from HR went out and looked at what the other public information officers, public affairs officers are, um, are, um, being paid in this area and that's where the number came from.
She want the job?
I do.
Okay, well, we just.
Got a question back.
Maggie, go ahead. You need to get, come to a mic. She wants the job?
Jack, uh, can you explain what you said earlier about misinformation with the, uh, contractors?
Not misinformation necessarily, it's just that information was put out and it didn't go through the contractor and the contractor was upset and, because it didn't come through him and that's his job, not their job. And, you know, all that could be rectified. Plus, the person wouldn't have buy-in to our community because they would be working for our community, not for themselves or some other organization. That's just what I feel. I don't know about the money amount though, that's.
And Cindy, as far as social media presence with inform, miss, there's misinformation all over social media. You're gonna get on these groups and this person's gonna go down this hole, trying to tell everybody on social media on these group pages and everything, on what's real and what's not?
So Mayor, Council member, this person will be trained to handle these kinds of things. And so we would come up with a game plan on how to handle that kinda stuff. I, just thinking about it, I don't think they would go on other people's sites and comment on that, but maybe would make appropriate comments on our sites or, you know, um, to counteract what was going on. So they would have a professional game plan on how to handle those types of things. Whereas really us trying to do it ourselves, we don't. Whereas really us trying to do it ourselves, we don't. We aren't able to handle that kind of work right now, so.
See, most comments are blocked on social media or not allowed. Even if they are open. You're creating a. You know, the rabbit hole, that's just going to keep on commenting, commenting. Even you get the most professional person. To be a, the most professional social media person, they'll never win.
Right.
You won't win on social media. So are we talking about paying this person this much money just to sit there and argue?
Oh.
Because you know the person. You've got some good time on your hands.
No, Mayor, Mayor Council, I don't believe that would, what would be happening, but like I said, they would, they would be. Trained and skilled in how to handle social media presence.
Right, with, you know, anything that's, like you said, ten hours a day for these boys and girls. You know, they need, they need three police officers, that's for sure, three extra police officers, but the fact. The PIO, I don't know.
Also, as every one of you knows, when you go somewhere and people know where you are, be it law enforcement. Management, council member, you always get questions about this, that and the other thing. And just think to yourself. How many of them are real and how many of them are just some twist off a poss- possible thought that really is not out there?
I see it as that's our job to answer those questions?
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I'm saying there is a ton of information. Every time any one of us walks in someplace and people know what we do. We get asked, you know, you know, questions about this, that or the other thing. So it's, you know, information. And how close you are to the root is sometimes how accurate you can or can't be.
So just to clarify what everybody's thinking is. Yes, we have a need for it, but the cost is the problem. Is that what I'm understanding? That we don't. Excuse me, you don't see this person staying busy for forty hours a week?
I don't, I don't see them staying busy for forty hours a week.
Doing just PIO stuff, but if they had other tasks to do to fill in like, say, grant researcher, I'm just throwing out ideas here.
Even with the, you know, dealing with the legislature, I don't see forty hours a week.
Would, would they be part of your exec staff?
Uh, we'd be happy to take that to a part-time. We'll evaluate it for a year and see what that looks like and then. Come back to you the next year if it needs more for, or if it's sufficient.
How do you know? I can't hear you.
Um, I would feel more comfortable with that. I do not see it as a full-time position. I'm thinking maybe fifteen hours a week at most. So yeah, that full-time and that price tag. I'm, I'm very happy to hear part-time. Half that is even pretty generous.
Well, if we do go part-time, then they won't qualify for all the benefits that we have, so the, the benefit rate will go way down too, so.
See, I like hearing that too. I mean, I want everyone to have benefits. That would be amazing. I just don't see. How it could be a full-time position, even with the legislature keeping up with that, we get emails. From the league all the time about what's going on, so I don't necessarily foresee how that's justified. I have, I have a big problem with that and I, I know we need a PIO very badly, very badly.
You thinking down the same path?
I am thinking down the same path.
Tom?
Yeah, I just, I, I don't know what the pool's going to look like when Laura goes out and tries to find a part-time PIO at, you know, good luck. But yeah, I agree with the rest of them, part-time should be fine.
I like the idea of the centralized person handling all correspondence and inquiries. I, I like that part because that is part of our, one of our major objectives. Staff responsiveness or town responsiveness to the citizens. So I could support it as long as we weren't stuck with the person forever if it wasn't working out.
Well, maybe if we did start it off the first year at halftime or, or whatever, then if they see a need to go up, then we could evaluate it then.
Yeah, I agree.
Boys?
I agree with the idea of start out at half, but I believe that that position is extremely important to this town. Getting the word out, somebody that's focused on that, that get the word out and interpret the incoming laws and all that stuff. That's a very important position. So I, I can agree with full-time and I can support, start out halftime and see if we keep them busy. And then add a year or isn't there a, in the employer, the laws, as I remember, there's some period of. You know, ninety days or something. I can't even remember the term.
Like probation?
Probation, yeah. So we could post it as a one-year position or something like that. So I believe it's quantified then, but. Yeah, because, but yeah, we could start at halftime.
Okay.
I had one question for the chief. Chief, I heard reference twelve-hour shifts. Was that by choice or by necessity?
It's by necessity.
Do we have officers out?
No, but what happens is, you know, if you do the math just on, you know, forty hours a week by the number of officers we have on patrol. It looks good, but then you have to take out, we, these guys want to go on vacation and people get sick and then training and. You know, so when we start pulling those things out of our schedule, you know, we're scrambling. I had a, a, a field training officer had to work fourteen hours a shift last week to cover because somebody got sick at the last minute and. You know, do you really want somebody out making life and death decisions that's been out there for fourteen hours driving around?
So this would pad your second annual list?
Well, with three positions, we can get them on ten-hour shifts, but besides the benefit of reducing the number of hours they're working in a shift. It gives us overlap days for training, so we can do a lot more of our training in-house, which is going to save us money in the long run anyway. We're not sending people out other places. So we'll be programming and training and things on those overlap days. So there's a lot of benefits to having those built into our schedule. Uh, but the burnout, you know, is a problem with twelve-hour shifts and, and so it's, it's a long time. And like I said, if you make an arrest at the eleventh hour, then literally, you know, you can be there thirteen or fourteen hours really easily.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Joe, I, I wrote a note here and I didn't ask you, but I, I just wanted to clarify for those listening. That on the online purchases, when they charge taxes, we receive those, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so if you order something from Target and have it delivered to your house, Target will charge Chino Valley sales tax on that purchase.
Good. All right. What's in it? Oh, yeah, go.
You're the best, thanks. Uh, so I'm still on the public affairs officer. The one-time charge of five thousand six hundred, I'm assuming was for recruitment, hopefully, was that, or sign-on bonus? What is that one time?
Mayor Council, that'll be for buying the things they need. You know, make, make sure they have a computer, a phone, just the. Things like that, yeah, that you just buy right when they come on.
The police department have their own PIO?
Yes, we have actually, I believe two, right? These two right there.
Our, our officers act as the police department PIOs.
But this PIO, if we picked up this one, they would not take over for the police department's PIO?
I would prefer not, just because.
So they would work with them, but not take over. A joint.
Yeah, we have to be really careful because a lot of times what we can disseminate to the public is different than maybe what the pool can disseminate to the public. We just got to make sure things aren't getting out there that can't be out there.
Makes sense?
Okay, what's next?
Next is our cost of living and merit increase. Um, right now we have a five percent cost of living and up to a two percent merit in the budget as proposed. The total dollars. This schedule here really shows and, and Laura actually went out and got this data for us. What all the other communities are doing with the increased inflation that we're seeing throughout the state of Arizona. So you can see all the comparable cities. They're all, a lot of them are in the seven to eight percent range. Uh, Prescott, for example, we're, we're basically doing what they're doing, a five percent cost of living with a two percent merit. And that's a performance-based merit, so some folks will get one, some will get two and one and a half, et cetera. Uh, Prescott Valley split it right down the middle, four and four, but they're, they're going up to eight percent for the total, so. Any questions on that?
Any questions, people? Eric?
Why Sedona so fluctuate so much?
I think they have a, it looks like there's, they have a range for the cost of living and a range for the merit.
Oh, it's not one point, that's dash.
One to five percent, three and a half to five percent, or they, or it might not be decided yet because we're all in the same place in the budget. But I think it's pretty universal that most communities are looking and the county I know is also. Seeing that the cost of living and they're trying to help offset that for their.
So is the next slide going to tell us what we're doing?
No. Okay, and I've, yeah. And I already calculated the number.
We don't know what we're proposing?
We do know. Yeah, that'd be a good time.
Yeah, so Mayor Council, we're talking about the stipend.
Yes.
Yes.
Or whatever.
So we went out and.
No, 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 I was talking about our employees. What are we doing for our employees?
Yeah, he said we're doing five, we're proposing five percent cola, cost of living and two percent merit.
Okay. We're commensurate with Prescott?
Yes, yeah, we're equal to Prescott.
Good, because we need to keep our people here.
Does that include the police?
No.
Nurse hours, no, it's different.
They got a new police building, they don't get anything else.
We're reducing, we're reducing. Depends how nice Randy is. Okay, so. General Fund CIP, we have some pretty good, this is the, the one percent sales tax where we're finishing up the construction of the police department and that's the main dollars that we're putting in there. Um, we're doing, we're about halfway done with the construction contract, so this is the, the finished half, the equipment and furniture, which is part of what we approved tonight. We have asbestos removal in the roads yard and we're recommending that we don't do that until the police department's done. And that's those trailers that were donated to the town to do something with that have been in the roads yard forever. Well, they have asbestos, so to get rid of them, we're going to have to take out the asbestos and then probably another.
No, this is the, like a six-wide that's over at the road yard or five-way. They tried to give it to me, they were trying to kill us.
Yeah, so it was, it was the free, the free donation that we received. So that doesn't have to be done next year, so we're just going to put that, but if we do have extra money left, then we'll do it. Um, three hundred thousand for the general plan, which was one of your goals. Uh, pool replaster and deck resurfacing, we are going to use Shasta to do that, I believe. And we were going to replaster this year, but we decided to put it off. And the deck resurfacing is the, the concrete's starting to crack around the pool deck and so we want to try to extend the life of that. Surface. And then of course, a hundred and fifty matched for the CDBG grant that we have.
That's the one that Cindy talked about with the kitchen and all that?
Yes, that's, that's the kitchen remodel, exactly what that is. And that's, that's a big number because we want to make sure we have enough to do it right. The COVID state and local fiscal recovery funds. So these are, this is total funding to date with these funds, so I wanted to just go, because we got two million dollars of it last year and we're going to get another two million this year. So the total amount we got from the feds is four point one million. We're bringing in another million from the general fund. And then we also have the EPA grant, which is going to help do the Prescott waterline or, yes, the Peavine waterline extension. So we brought those grant funds over, so we're going to have about five point six million dollars in total funding. And the two projects that we're, that we're proposing is one, the Peavine waterline extension, which will loop the water over to Bright Star. And then the Perkinsville eighty-nine water and sewer extension, which will get the water and sewer how far, Frank?
That dollar amount will get us across the highway, I believe.
Really?
That's it?
Underneath the roundabout and everything?
Just to the other side of the highway. We probably still have one more leg to get it. Back into the backside of Hocksnest. It depends on, prices are in so much flux, it's hard to predict right now.
Is that guaranteed for a certain amount of time? Well, nothing's guaranteed, but.
No, we're, we're.
That, yeah.
These, these are just our best estimates off the current market right now. So. As prices go up and down, we adjust those estimates. Until we put it out to bid, we can't lock in the prices. So there, there is a chance it could go down if the economy and the supply chain gets straightened out, but.
To go the other way now.
Yeah.
I keep saying I don't know how it could go any higher, but it does.
No, you're fine. This was nothing.
So basically we're just going to be about twelve thousand short, or yeah, twelve thousand short according to your estimate, right?
Oh, we'll be twelve thousand plus.
Oh, we'll be over, yeah, you're right. I'm sorry, read it backwards.
Yeah.
Where are you going? Didn't say you could leave.
Just to clarify on the, on the Perkinsville project, we'll, we've got that at three phases right now for construction. And as we bid it out, we can add or subtract the phases. To fit the funding.
Okay.
Go as far as we can with the funding council approves.
Plus the road will be re-fixed when we're done, correct?
Right, when you put the utilities under, we're patching the road on top.
Good. Patching or redoing it?
Redoing.
Okay.
The road CIP funds is, we have five hundred thousand just to reconstruct local streets and we do that for the little smaller projects and then we'll have two million dollars worth of. The twenty-two, twenty-three street improvements, which Frank is already designing and working with the roads committee to do, correct?
I'm sorry, Joe, I couldn't hear you.
Um, Frank is already working with the roads committee and having those improvements designed as we speak.
Okay, cool. Hand over there, Annie.
Why are we only allocating two million? I'm, I mean, I know that sounds like, whoa, you know, pocket change, but why is it only two million if we have so much in reserves?
Well, we're moving three million over from the general fund. We're using five hundred thousand this fiscal year and so we only have two and a half million dollars left. So that's, well, the, the quick, the quick and easy answer is that's about all we have to spend, even moving a large amount from the reserves over to do the road construction.
Can you explain that to me, please? I don't understand why we can't move the money over to the roads with the excess.
Yeah, we are moving a lot of money out of the general fund into the cap, the roads capital improvement fund. So like we moved just rough, we're, we're planning on moving three million dollars over. And so we've already allocated five hundred for the road improvements that we're doing right now on it. And so we'll have five hundred for just local streets, cul-de-sacs or whatever, Frank, you know, small little projects. But we'll have two million for the road improvement projects, the big projects like we're doing right now. But just the next year's portion of them.
Frank? How far is two point five going to get you realistically, realistically?
Can it get you down one east?
That will get. Streetwise. Road one south from the highway to one east and road one east from Fletcher Court to three south. With added the utility money under it to get the sewer underneath one east. That's our projects we have scheduled.
That's a lot, that's a lot, actually.
Six thousand two hundred feet on one east and was a half mile. On a one, one south. Two south is this year, one south is next year. So about a mile and a half.
If you had a dream budget.
About two hundred million.
Well, let's say a daydream while working in your office.
Per year for the streets? Well, that's if we, if we start working on that, that pavement management program that we talked about in. The retreat, that would help us develop some, some really objective numbers. And you can see the, the data come in and we can generate those graphs and, and show council. If you spend this much money every year, here's where your road quality goes. If you spend less, here's how much it'll go up and you can decide. What level you want and that would help me give you better numbers. Back in eighteen. We just, with our own information we had, what limited information we had, we were thinking just to keep the roads at a current level in eighteen, we were looking at one point six. To two million a year. And we haven't had that amount, plus with. And we haven't had that amount, plus with prices going up, that number has obviously gone up. You know, just rough guess, three million a year or something. That's kinda just to keep them where they're at. So uh, most of the roads in town, the reason that they don't get the love they need with the patching is because they're like four and a half was two layers of chip seal, basically two layers of gravel with tar on it over whatever dirt was there. There's no structure. There's no gravel base under them. They're just a dust pallet of is all chip seal really is. It's a seal coat to seal out the dust. And it's hard to repair and patch that. Uh, material, we really need to just keep chip sealing it every three to five years and the, a lot of those roads were done in the eighties, nineties, I think, um, without the needed maintenance and without any structure underneath them. They're not designed to handle any trucks and, and they're getting them is, is the problem with the road. So when we go in like we're doing this year and next year, we're actually having to go in, rip the road out and add the six to eight inches of gravel and the three to four or five inches of, of asphalt to make it a real road that with proper maintenance will last twenty years. It's not, it still needs the overlays and the seal coats and everything.
What about the five hundred thousand for reconstruct local streets? How far will that get you? I'm trying to give you money here.
If you're thinking of the, if you're thinking of the cul-de-sacs off Perkinsville that are in such bad shape?
No, I'm thinking of anything.
Right, about a quarter mile. It's not very far. It's expensive to completely rebuild roads. That's one reason we did the seal coat project on all the asphalt subdivisions. When we got the complaint that why is everyone, why are they working on repaving the, all the good roads in town? Well, you seal coat them because it's pennies on the dollar. We did that for all of those five or six neighborhoods for the same price that we just did that little section of two north, for an example. And that seals those roads for three to five years, uh, even though the cracks do come back through and we need to crack seal. So, but to, for these rebuilds that we need desperately, like Perkinsville and then over by El Tro, that neighborhood, that one's been beat up ever since that big snowstorm. Uh, we, we could put millions into it just to bring them up to where you would expect them to be if you lived on that road.
Joyce?
Also, I'm noticing a lot of large trucks, belly dumps, the, like the tractor trailer with the big running down from five, going south on one west and uh, Reed, which reads the border of our town, but I'm seeing a lot more of these heavy trucks making that run to avoid the downtown roundabout. I'm, I don't know, I'm only suppo- assuming, you know, ash out of me. And uh, but I'm seeing a lot of those trucks on the one west and Reed as well as one east versus down eighty-nine. And those roads aren't designed for those loads. That's it.
I was just given a sticky note that says my mic works with a smiley face.
It does work, I can hear you.
I'd like to open it for discussion. I know um, everyone has bets on how long we're gonna be here tonight.
And you're just trying to milk it out so your three hours comes true.
No, I um, I wanna make sure that we're funding the right projects and um, first and foremost, there are a ton of citizens that are extremely grateful. Posting pictures, they're four and north, four and a half north being torn up, whatnot. They're very happy. That's a, a small number and I know you have a lot on your plate, a lot. Anybody, council leadership feel like maybe we could move some money to reconstruct local streets? Not the huge main projects, but help some of the other streets out? Open for discussion?
I just have a question. Is, you're saying, so for the, I remember you said on the, the planning for twenty-two, twenty-three, road one east was on, was on it, but inflation might have wiped out going further north than one south?
Right, depending on the, the budget and, and the numbers that come in might do it. We, we already took, we were gonna put a dry water line under there for future use and we already took that out because of the high cost of, of pipe these days. So we figure with the, with the right of way we have there, we could come back and put that water line off on the side of the road and not affect the road. But the sewer really needs to go in if, if, if we can get it designed in there, so. Um, that's some of the effect we're trying to, to see with costs. Some of the utility installation costs have doubled in the past year.
And, and, and I think it's important to realize, Annie, that yeah, we can move some area and do some roads, but if we're gonna come back and tear them all up in a year or two to do sewer and water, then we've gained nothing.
No, yeah, that's a good point. Um, no, I appreciate that. I'm just, we have many, 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 many miles.
We do, we do, and we're doing our best, you know?
Right, no, I believe it.
And people still want their pickleball courts and their swimming pools and.
Don't forget about a new dog park.
Yeah, and the new dog park. So, you know, I, I don't know, I think we're doing, I think we're coming great strides, because we were,
Yeah.
You know, we were trying to hit the one point six million and for the last two, three years, we've been over two point five, is that uh, correct? So we're, I mean, we're doing way more than, and I realize it's not enough if you live on that road that's tore up.
Right.
You know, yeah, but what can you do?
Keep the trucks and shovels out there, pat, pat, pat. We had a chance to get more money a couple of years ago and they turned it down.
Frank, is there any other roads like four and a half that are? That are just paved on top of the dirt?
That's a work in progress right now.
Probably without given engineering numbers, thirty-plus miles. It's, it's most of the roads, one east I talked about is that way. Most of one west.
All those cul-de-sacs off of Perkinsville.
Yeah, entire neighborhoods.
What cul-de-sac?
Uh, Antelope.
Angus, Antelope, Campbell.
Pass the church south off of, off of West. Go check those roads out. They are horrible.
Right, but they're a quick, that's a quick drive to your house, right? I mean, compared to the street.
In the end of that road, it's a big difference, you know, so if we can do one of those a year and in three or four years, we'll have them all done.
Right.
You know, and that's why we're.
This year, I'm sorry.
That's why we're skipping the first road, which is the name. Angus is because they're thinking about the sewer extension coming down and going down Angus. So they're, they're kinda bypassing that one for now and hopefully we can get the sewer and water down there and then do it. You know, and not put it in and tear it out.
Right.
I really wish Lon were here.
Lon?
Yeah.
Cause you don't like me?
No, I mean, I really don't. I mean, I do.
We're gonna take a break for Joyce?
Sure. We want pause?
Yeah, let's pause for a minute.
Hit pause on your recorder.
Sorry, Jack, I know you wanted to finish thirty minutes ago, but.
I could fill it.
I said an hour and a half, so you've got uh, ten minutes.
I could fill the time.
Joyce has got ten minutes.
I said three hours, so.
I know you did.
Josh, you know I love you.
You said two and a half, right? You were two. Two? Who was two? No, she was three. I thought you were two.
I was two and a half, three.
You was two? John, you weren't here to make predictions.
I, I was left out. That's cool. I'm allowed.
You wanna make your prediction after the meeting?
And the closest without going over wins, whatever the pot was, right?
Yeah, it's pizza.
I'm getting a cookie.
Free pizza.
That sounds good.
Win all the pizza.
Are we, are we pretty much through most of this?
I don't know. Hey.
And most of those are charts, right?
We'll bring it back to you guys if you guys agree.
Okay, I mean, I was talking about, I didn't hear that he said the five percent, but I think after you said it, I did hear him say it. I was reading, yeah, and I was reading and. Ask her what two and two is. Go introduce yourself, John.
Okay.
Trish, this is John. He wanted to meet you. How was it, how was it? Good? You going back tomorrow? Follow up on my shoulder. I told Steve this morning, I said. I was gonna tell her. Don't you think that'd be a good idea if it gets done? Cause they're gonna have it, they're gonna have a kitchen upstairs. So we could deep fry the turkeys out back and then take them up there and cut them up and. Everybody could eat them there, come in and eat and meander and check it out. I really enjoyed today. Sarah, when you do? You can just keep trying. Cindy, I want, I told Steve today, you're, you guys are more than welcome over to the house. You can visit with Jerry, film a couch, pet dogs, watch TV, do laundry. Cause Steve and I talk, he likes me, so he calls and we talk, or I call him. Yeah. Okay, y'all, let's get this done. Come on.
I like it there, but it's just too far. It's just too, too far.
It is. It's all good.
It was time.
Where's Annie at? On the phone or something? John, would you holler at Annie up there, please? Uh, where's Eric go?
All right, I had a cookie.
Yeah.
I should be able to calm down.
The never-ending business thing so far that I thought would come up has come up.
A few years ago, we were doing less than five hundred thousand. Now we're doing two and a half. So we're making good progress. We're making, we're chipping it.
Cause I remember when they were going around.
Yeah, tell me about it. Yeah, tell me about it.
Fifteen years, cause it quit.
Well, I don't know where we were.
Do we have to call the meeting back to order, sir?
Hmm?
Do you have to call it back to order?
I have to call it back to order. Meeting's back to order. Okay. And how'd I do?
You did wonderful.
Thank you.
I think everybody understands that the meeting is now at-
That'd be good.
Okay. Um, one of the things that we did talk about, that Frank, this is one of Frank's babies, is the pavement management program for a hundred thousand dollars. This'll help us get the data that we need, so we can really plan on our road improvements and give you-
So this is a computer program?
This is, yes.
Okay.
That's a one-time, that's a one-time piece out of-
It's a one-time thing.
One-time shot.
There'll probably be a, um, go ahead.
So, my best guess for this is it, we need to update our inventory of the roads, the links, the widths, the depths. Um, and do a condition assessment of the cracking and all the destruction that's out there. And then, and then put that into a computer program. There'll be some ongoing costs, a small fraction of this, of ongoing costs of the licensing for the computer program. But most of it's for consultants to get the initial push of it started. And then, uh, we'll probably rerate the roads every two to three years. So you'll probably do a third to a half of the road system, re- rerating the roads every other year or something like that.
And we'll bring this back to council, you know, next, when, before we issue the contracts for this. Um, the water fund C I P, understand the water fund is a small fund, uh, dollar-wise. But, uh, we're gonna do a backup generator at the north campus well, the Yav- the Yavby College well. We're gonna paint of our water tanks, which is an ongoing maintenance thing. Uh, half of a pole barn, and basically half of it's for water and half of it's for sewer. And we split it between the two funds, so each, each fund pays for half. And that's just a pole barn, so they can park their equipment underneath it, out at there, at the plant and get it out of the sun. And then, uh, sixty-five thousand dollars for a new fill station, uh, located somewhere. So people hauling water can have an, so we can have two places to fill and not just one. So if one goes down, we can still get water to people. And the sewer C I P, uh, we're gonna complete the screw press, almost done with that. One point one million for the equalization basin and the turbine blower, that's about a one million, three fifty. As, if you remember, I recommended that we borrow about one point five million. And that's just to make sure we have enough money to cover the increased costs that we see coming. Of course, the other part of the pole barn, and then, uh, the one east sewer line, we have two million dollars budgeted there also. And then, uh, starting the plant, the water plant ex- engineering for the expansion this budget year. And so, yeah, I'll let you take that part, if you want.
Oh, just sort of going over that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, um, the supplemental budget requests that are, um, included in the, in the, um, recommended budget that you have before you. Um, some of these, Joe's already talked about, of course, us getting the general plan off the ground and completed. Um, the pavement management program, and just like Joe's design on the sewer plant expansion. So for year two to three of the council goals that we, that came out of your retreat, um, some of the stuff that we're actually gonna be able to get to or start addressing in the first year, um, the iPads for council, um, so we'll no longer have to print packets, um, H R, um, and this one, Joe, you'll have to address for me, um, the H R I S, I don't remember, Human Resources Information System. So, okay, to improve the technology of, um, in, in human resources, so we're better, um, equipped to automate that, those systems. E-books in the library, we're increasing that budget line item, um, that's very popular. Um, our fleet management system, so we are, um, looking at R T A software. It's a very widely used software for fleet management, so we'll be able to automate that, to better keep track of our assets in our fleet. Um, to keep track of when maintenance needs to be done, what's been done, all those sort of things, how old our fleet is, so that we can better put in place, um, vehicle maintenance and vehicle replacement. Um, agenda management program, um, your town clerk, um, will be extremely, um, happy, as will the rest of us who have to use our current software. This is just to make it a better process for our agenda management. The one we have now is a little clunky to use and a little outdated, so we'll be looking to update that. And then, um, increasing our bandwidth. Um, and that's way too technical for me to tell you what all that involves, but Spencer, um-
Yeah, Spencer's recommending it, um, just increase our bandwidth between our facilities and plus a little bit more for the P D. We'll have to increase that budget line on them slightly, so.
And also to address, um, your priorities, um, that came out of the retreat, a public affairs officer, and we'll move that to a point five, like we talked about earlier. Um, and then, but we are increasing, um, our, um, budget line items, um, for advertising, for public relations, in planning, in recreation, library, um, all of the departments, um, to make sure that, um, we are getting the most and best information out to our residents that we can. Um, accelerating road maintenance, um, we've talked about that one. Um, we are increasing the budget line item for some of the maintenance along highway eighty-nine. And then getting a roller with a trailer for pavement management. Um, increasing maintenance activities was another, um, priority for you. So we're increasing, um, our fence maintenance, um, contract support services in parks, and town facilities. Um, we did request, um, one custodial, but this is, um, rather than adding two people in facility, facilities, we went with one custodian and then some increased contracting, um, till we can better assess what our needs are once, um, the police building gets in place, and they have full staffing over there. We're gonna be doing some painting and on the flooring at the, and flooring at the aquatics center. And, um, shop building improvements for fleet, if you've been in there, anyone who's been in there know it, it needs some, some, some work. Yeah. And, uh, the two positions that we covered earlier, the custodians and the utility maintenance, all to, um, increase maintenance activities. And then again, um, we have added a new town hall complex in the out years in the C I P. Um, how that'll be funded yet, we don't know, but we know we need to get it on the plan. As most of you know, we are completely out of room, there's, um, um, not a square to spare, um, um, to put, um, staffing. And as we continue to grow, that's, we're, it's just gonna have to happen. So we're gonna need to look to, um, get a new town hall complex if we can. And with that, that's all we have for the presentation. Oh, there was one other thing I wanted to, um, cover that didn't make it on the slide. But we, um, looked at what the other mayors and council stipends are in our surrounding areas. And our mayor, your, your, your stipends have fallen behind what they're all doing. Um, so we looked at Prescott, Prescott Valley, Cottonwood, I believe Camp Bertie. And, um, currently for, um, mayor and council here, you're getting, um, six thousand annually and council thirty-six hundred annually, so five hundred a month, three hundred a month. And if you look at all the other, um, agencies that I just talked about, they are at nine thousand annually and six thousand, nine thousand and six thousand for mayor and council, or seven fifty a month for mayor and three, five hundred a month for council. So we wanted you to consider that. We had already put it in the budget numbers, um, and it works. Um, but I, we didn't wanna see you continue to fall behind. Um, so we wanted, um, for you to consider that as well, that we would bring that forward in the budget to bring your stipends up to match the surrounding areas.
Cool. Ain't nobody gonna argue about that, are they?
Yeah.
And again-
We can't vote ourselves a raise.
No.
Right.
Who, who, it will come on the next cycles.
Right. Okay, questions?
Moving up to twenty-five cents an hour.
You're making the big, pretty soon you'll go to fries.
Um, I did have, can we go back three slides, please?
Okay, I'm just gonna do this a slow way, I'm sorry. That one?
Mike.
One, uh, went back too far, one more, please. Okay, so improved communication with residents, um, public affairs officer, we talked about, uh, part-time. Where is the advertising, public relations budget line increase for planning, recreation, library, tell me? Is there specifically under each one? Is that what I'm seeing up there?
Mayor, council, that's correct.
I'm just gonna pause. Okay, so.
How'd they get all the cinema?
So I, for instance, planning asks for an additional fifteen hundred this year. Recreation asked for an additional five hundred. Library asked for an additional five- Oh, sorry, library asked for an additional two hundred to their budget. And what was it, town manager and economic development, I think that one was. Because that was for that collaborative, I think that, actually, that one's going five thousand.
So it's, it's just, um, increase in the light items in all the different budgets.
Could you go over those numbers again for me by department, cause I don't, I'm not, here.
Yes.
Maybe I need my glasses.
I'll go over them for you and then I can give them to you.
Thank you.
So we'll start with planning, let me go back to that one. Oh, there they are. Here's planning. Planning is asking for an additional fifteen hundred in their budget for, um, advertising and public relations. Recreation is asking for an additional five hundred in their budget for next year. Library is asking for an additional two hundred in their budget for next year. And then the town manager, economic development, is asking for, uh, an additional, I think that one was, uh, five thousand? And that's for all things, including the greater, um, collaborative, Chino Valley Collaborative.
Can you expand on that, please, the Chino Valley Collaborative?
What did she say?
Um, Maggie's gonna come up and talk about that.
I couldn't hear what you said.
I was just asking to expand on that. Thank you.
So, my mic is working good. Um, the Greater Chino Valley Collaborative is a wonderful group of people, starting at supervisor Brown's office, um, Bureau of Land Management, Arizona Trust for Public Lands, um, town manager, and then myself, the gurus at the ecdev levels, all working together to, and the Forest Service being the lead on it, um, create more access to the river, more trails, mitigation being a huge part of that, you know, we've got all these people coming in, how do we, you know, keep it the way it is, not destroy the land? Um, and it goes, the, the geography is huge, it's all the way up to Ash Fork, um, over, I guess, to the base of Mingus, all the way to northern Prescott. Um, it also involves, you know, connecting the trails. Um, one of the really, really cool components going on right now is the Trust for Public Land is an escrow on the eastern portion of Del Rio Springs, um, for preservation purposes. It's really cool. Um, what they're applying for right now is a grant to buy it, so money's always the issue. But it's a really great group of people, and what, what'll happen is it could even be a state park at some point. So us being involved in it is huge, Cindy's been on board the whole time, yeah.
It'd be, it'd be kinda like what Prescott and Prescott Valley's doing with Glassford Hill.
Correct.
Yes.
I think even bigger, um, just because of where it's at, I mean, it's beautiful and, you know, preserving that is so amazing, that big beautiful bald eagle over on that side and all the history and the barns, and I mean, it's just wonderful. So we've been, it's only a few months in the making and we are already, I mean, it's pressing forward. It's ran by Southwest Decision Resources, who did the one over in Camp Bertie.
Yeah, we'll talk about that, how successful that was.
Very successful. It's called the Bertie Front, and it's shared, it's shared, um, what do you call it, shared, uh, shared much, shared resources. So trying to find a way to come up with money, so I had asked Cindy to definitely, can we put some aside to whatever that might be? So we can also participate in, in some of those costs, but it's, it's a wonderful project and I encourage you guys to definitely, um, be on the calls if they're, I don't know, are you on the leadership calls?
Nope.
Nope, so. Well, it's, it's, we haven't gotten that far yet. They haven't had their first, right now, it's just, at the town manager kinda level right now, and they haven't had, hosted the first, will involve community stakeholders, mayors, council and that kinda thing, so it's, we're, we're very excited about it.
Good.
And Vice Mayor Perkins, that's, we added ninety-six hundred dollars as a one-time fee in, in our non-departmental fund, or department, which is department ninety-five. So it'll be on page three, very bottom there.
And one more thing, and that, it is for the Chino Valley Greater Collaboration, but also, um, it is involving, you know, economic development, advertising dollars and swag and all the other stuff that we have to buy, so. Me, yeah. Correct.
Thank you, Maggie.
Now, that's one, um, okay, so it's nine thousand six hundred for the one-time-
For the one-time.
Request.
Yes.
So the ongoing expenses for her position. We're not requesting this year? I'm just confused. Help me out, please.
Um, yeah, we didn't do any increases for hers, cause she, we are, uh, last budget year, we gave her like three separate line items that gave her sufficient funds to do.
Okay.
What Maggie's doing, yeah. Yeah.
I'm just trying to make sure we prioritize the money the best we can.
Frank, what are you guys using for your-
You're just milking it out.
The time?
Yeah.
No, mm-mm.
Now you got fifteen minutes past my time, now you're happy.
Well, we have to get this right before they bring it back to us, that's what we gotta look at.
He's using a-
We got a question on the floor over here.
Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
Fleet question, uh, for fleet management right now, we're, we're using iWorks and it's, I don't wanna, it's just not-
It's junk.
I worked with P N Z, the-
The same one, P, so, yeah, they have modules, we, uh, that's also our current road inventory is in there for the past fifteen years. We, we have modules for fleet, roads, uh, utilities uses some for some of the backflow, uh, things and, uh, some other things. They're asking us for a three-year contract right now, so-
I worked with-
Yeah, we're, we're having discussions.
Is the, uh, R T A's at, uh, G P S on the vehicles also?
Uh, but I believe Cindy and Terry might know more about it than I do, but-
I don't think R T A has that much to think about, yeah. We could add different modules, I don't know that this dollar includes that, but we can add different modules.
Yeah, the-
And he probably hasn't decided yet exactly where he's going with it.
Aren't, aren't we going away from iWorks?
Yes.
And we're going back to the good one. Citizen serve.
I saw Citizen Serve.
I Works is more than just planning.
And how much is iWorks?
I don't know, they keep wanting them to-
More money.
Doesn't work?
Yeah, that's, that's why I said we're having current discussions with them.
So would it be the same Citizen Serve the county uses?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so Citizen Serve and then you'd use R T A software for the vehicles, it'd be two separate ones, which is fine.
Right, and then we'd probably go away from iWorks on roads for the upcoming pavement management program because, uh, there's just not the, the budgeting tools that I need to bring to council for the future budgeting and things. It's, it's more of a glorified spreadsheet, in my opinion.
And I'm all for, I'm all for software, cause it makes everybody's job easier, software that works.
Yep.
Yeah, you do, it's, you know as well as anybody what you get out of it, what you put into it, but, uh, you gotta have the tools, the right tools to get the job done.
I can't wait till Jack gets an iPad.
Yep. I'm, I'm for getting rid of iWorks.
Yeah.
Please.
It's no work.
Should call it no works.
No works. Didn't works.
Didn't works, yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, after tonight's meeting, we'll go ahead and make the adjustments that we've talked about. Uh, we have a couple little small things, like I gotta move the pool cover from this year's budget to next year, because we're not getting it until July. Um, and then, uh, the next meeting, I'll do a small presentation and we'll adopt the tentative budget with sets our maximum amount we can spend next fiscal year. You can always reduce it, but we can't increase it from that point on and start the publication process.
And when you say pool cover, see, when you first said pool cover, I was thinking of an awning over the pool.
No, sir.
No, but you're talking about a tarp.
A tarp.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll cover it.
And it's the, a replacement of the one that was originally put in that fell apart. So we have all the anchors already in the, in the concrete, we can attach it to it.
No, I just wanted to clarify that in my brain.
Yes, so that is exactly what it is. So we'll make, the budget will be approximately forty-six million dollars, up from about forty-one million dollars last year.
So we're increased by five million?
About five million dollars.
Okay. I'm good with it. Any more discussion? What? No, it's okay, we'll, we'll just sit here and wait on you to read your stuff.
Joe, for the contract for the police furniture, you're, because we voted on it today, you secure those prices?
Yes, yeah, and that's, that was actually the reason we brought it to this meeting. So we'll be issuing purchase orders first thing in the morning to the vendor and they can order and lock in our prices.
Well, that had to be done by Friday anyway, or something.
Yes.
Isn't that what was in there?
Yeah.
I'm almost there, Jack, don't worry.
Yes.
Anyway, I inject in the butter garlic. I inject that deep.
This is a traveling chef over here.
You inject.
Hmm?
You inject your brisket.
I inject my turkeys with butter and garlic before I deep fry them. Makes them really good.
That way you can watch your arteries harden while you're-
You don't have to watch them, you can feel them.
I got chicken and a smoker at home, but I got another hour, so I'm fine.
Anybody in the room in favor of sending like five hundred thousand? Anybody in the room in favor of sending like five hundred thousand over to roads?
Sure.
The reason I'm asking is we have, I mean, this budget is, even conservative, is quite substantial. So, to me, it seems like five hundred thousand is kind of meh, when it comes to the grand scheme of things. If we're investing on all these other projects, we should at least throw some money that way also.
If we can do it, it'd be wonderful. We take all the money we can get for roads and streets.
As long as we've got our plan in effect for where we're going, with what, when.
Yeah, if I have your plan covered.
I think there's way, you know, we need to figure that out.
I really think at this point in time, we have, we've allocated as much as we can transferring from the general fund to the road CIP. So, to get any more money in, it's almost like we need to reduce spending somewhere else or not do a project we're planning on doing and using that money over that way. So, because we are just right at the line of getting into our reserves with what we have budgeted right now. Yeah, so...
A lot of money's tied up in other projects, infrastructure projects. For which roads are you considering? Just any road?
Yeah. I, I have no preference. I just think, um... Especially if we're trying to reduce our reserves if we're over half, you know.
Aren't we spending a couple of million plus this year on roads, Frank?
Yes.
We're putting a pretty good chunk in and we got some other money from outside money to augment it. Even though we could probably take ten million and it wouldn't even scratch the surface on our road situation. But I think a steady, ongoing, year-to-year plan like we have, just keep moving.
Yeah, there's a five-year plan on roads and streets. Any additional funds, just move us into another category that maybe we can knock out a little sooner.
Right.
Please.
So, this is, this is the general fund. And so, this amount right here, the biggest chunk going out here, so this is getting into our reserves. And we're planning, if we spend every dollar, we're gonna have exactly what we need for our, our, our required reserve balance. So, we're sorta topped out on how much, we moved as much as we could out of the general fund. Now, that trend... Yeah, it, it was a little painful, but I, I concur that we need to spend the money. So, here's where, here's the big general funds, two fifty for the asset replacements, which was for our vehicles, uh, one police car and a few other vehicles. We moved, uh, five hundred thousand dollars just in case over to cover the police department if it's needed. So, there's another five hundred. If we don't need it, we can then move, we could move, come back once the police department is done and transfer it over to the road CIP, so that's...
No, he's not.
No, he's not. He has to get it through my office, so, and I'm not very nice. Yeah, just say no, Joe. So, this is the three point one million dollars that we're moving over. We've spent about five hundred thousand already. So, we have two point five million and that's where we get the two point five million we have in the roads right now. And then, we also moved a million over to, to do the Peavine Water Line and the Perkinsville Sewer Extension. So, and that was a just-in-case number, depending on what those bids come in, but I have a feeling we're gonna need this one million dollars to accomplish those two projects. So, this is where you'd look to see if you can, if we can get any more roads money and we've sort of allocated as much as we can.
I think, I think, uh, the way the budget stands now, it's fine. And if we have extra money come the end of the year, then we can look at putting it on the roads before the year's end. Are you okay without any?
Yeah, that would be great. Um, I just don't know the process for that, um, when we're towards the end of the year, I mean...
We're not allowed to spend over whatever we say is like the forty-six million.
Right.
But, so if we only spend forty-three million, just for easy numbers, then we'd have three million extra that we could put...
You could transfer it, mid, you could do a mid-year budget adjustment, as long as you...
That's, that's what I was looking for.
Over that forty-six million dollars.
Mid-year?
Mid-year or any, well, we just did five hundred thousand in the last meeting for this year. We transferred, 'cause we had it to move over.
So, mid-year, next year, we could possibly, if we had a surplus.
We could also, yeah.
And Vice Mayor, I didn't know if you heard the comments over here, but in the first blush of the budget, there was about a million dollars less that Joe had proposed and Cindy did do some arm twisting based on the feedbacks she got from you. And so, this number...
Thank you.
Is based on here, Cindy hearing what you said.
Yeah, because originally, the recommendation was to move about a million dollars into roads and so the extra two point one was th- this arm going back way high. But I concur because I have a feeling if, you know, based on our history and the way we budget and that we're probably gonna have an extra half million or a million dollars at the end of the year. We'll probably be in the same...
At that time, then we could figure out what we're gonna do with it.
And we'll know. We understand as staff that getting as much money into the roads as possible is what council's giving us that direction. So, we're gonna do everything we can to get as much money.
Yeah, and then we'd also have to look at having the resources even to get it done, even if we have the money. Sometimes we don't have the manpower, so we would bring all that to you at the same time.
Yeah, we can work all that out. Okay? Any other questions? How about a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Motion made in second half paper?
Aye.
Any opposed? Were you not done?
Well, she is now, we adjourned.
Two hours.
All right.
He went, what he went?
It's on him next week.